And all you do for civic engagement. Thank you to my opponent Katie for being here. Thank you all you for being here. It's great to see democracy in action. And our engaged audience is especially fitting that we're hosting this in East Central. My wife Tiffany and I are raising our newborn daughter Hazel here. One month before she was born. We took our campaign headshot in the backyard of our house on our iPhone. Since then, I've knocked on thousands of doors from East Central to Eagle Ridge. And at every door, our campaign message is resonating. We are running to better our response on public safety, housing homelessness, protecting our environment. We're running to give neighborhoods a stronger voice. And we're running to put people over politics. We need a city where everyone, no matter who they are, can thrive. A city where our daughter has a better tomorrow. I have a long history advocating for Spokane. I was Spokane City Council member, John Snyder's legislative aide. Who represented District Two. I was legislative aide for Senate Majority Leader Andy Billy. We worked on a lot of bipartisan legislation to improve voter access, protect the Spokane River, and in recession years, a balanced budget. After serving as the Eastern Washington Director for YWCA Youth in Government, where I worked with high school students on civic engagement. I've been at Planned Parenthood in Greater Washington in Idaho where I championed policies that have been signed into law to protect and expand reproductive healthcare. I'm proud to be the only candidate in this race endorsed by local electeds, our unions such as Spokane Firefighters, Building Trades, Teachers, environmental organizations such as the Sierra Club, Washington Conservation Voters, advocates like Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. And I'm proud to be the only pro-choice candidate in this race. I've been a fearless advocate for all in Spokane. I want to bring my experience to strengthen access to housing, economic opportunity, safe and livable neighborhoods. And I'm ready to serve as your next District Two Council Member. And on day one, I'll be able to hit the ground running. Thank you.
My name is Katie Trelore and I was born and raised in Spokane. I graduated from Ferris High School and received my undergrad and graduate degrees from Gonzaga University. I spent almost a decade teaching and part of that time was in Spokane Public Schools. I helped start a nonprofit called Bite to Go which feeds hungry kids when they're not in school. And I currently own my own business working with individuals with ADHD and other neurodiverse diagnoses to overcome barriers that they're experiencing and helping them find success through elevating their executive function skills. So that's organization, prioritization, goal-directed persistence, and impulse control. And my family and I chose to stay in Spokane because we love it here. Spokane has so much to offer, beautiful parks and river, schools. And we love it here, the community events are great. And selfishly, I want my two boys Charlie and Henry, they're 11 and 12. I want them to grow up here and then go out into the world and do amazing things. And then when they're ready, be so proud of their hometown. I want them to come back to Spokane. I'm running as the only independent candidate in this race. And it's not easy to be an independent candidate. It actually means it's the hard thing to do because it's a promise to the city of Spokane to park your personal ideologies at the door and make decisions based on data and research and community input. I am looking forward to serving District Two as a City Council representative. And I'm so excited to be here tonight to connect with all of you.
Thank you. First question I asked before, public service is a call for some run for public office for all the things that people say. What attracted you to the idea of running for public office?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. I think my combination of experience, knowing that the moment of where we are at in the city, it feels like we're really at a tipping point with public safety, housing, homelessness. With my background, I feel like I have the policy expertise, ready to hit the ground running. And then, you know, knowing, I think, for our family, we are not independently wealthy. We are a working family. We live here, this is our home. We love our parks, we love our schools, we love our neighborhoods. And I want to be a really strong advocate for.
Thank you, sir.
I'm running because I love Spokane. And if you, if there's a problem, it's really easy to sit back and complain. But when you engage and really want to make change, then you have to do the hard things. And running, running for a city council position is not easy. It makes you very vulnerable. And it makes you, you know, really evaluate who you are and who you want this and how you want to affect your city. And so I'm excited to do all those hard things because I know that that's what our city needs.
Thank you. Next question. What are your thoughts on a development moratorium in the Leetah Valley?
Should we go back and forth?
Yes.
So I've spent quite a bit of time out in the Leetah Valley recently. And I understand the struggles and the barriers that that community is facing. The infrastructure issues that are surrounding the Leetah Valley are severe. And, and I want to help them and I feel for them. So I believe that we need to, as a city, come together and make a comprehensive plan that involves all the entities involved so that everybody has a voice. And I think there's 20-plus infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. And so in that comprehensive plan, there has to be timelines to address those. And then if a moratorium is part of that plan, I will on City Council support the moratorium. I just don't want to see a moratorium be used as a plan to make a plan.
Sir, can you respond?
Yeah, this issue is personal for me. My wife and I lived in Grandview Thorpe. In the neighborhood that we lived in, there's one way in and one way out. We can't build housing in a wildfire zone where there is not a full fire station. It's just common sense. We need to have this moratorium in place. It's not a social statement or a way for votes. It is a legal act that is because of public safety risks. I think there's been a lot of confusion around this conversation about development impact fees. They cannot be used to fix current deficiencies. The impact fees for development, they can't be used for fires, schools, parks, public transportation, community centers, a lot of what the residents in the Leetah are asking for. They're very clearly asking for this moratorium and need to be responsive to their needs and come up with capital funding that has continued to be delayed and delayed for a new operational, fully operational fire station and items that they're requesting.
You mentioned impact fees. Do you want to talk about impact fees for fire, roads, any kind of infrastructure?
Well, impact, impact fees can't be used for the items that my opponent just discussed. But I do think that we are at a position in Spokane where the, we have $200 million set aside to narrow Division Street. And if you go out and talk to the businesses that are on Division, that's not something that they want and it's not something that they need. So when we're talking about finding the funding, when I'm on City Council, that's state money that can be used for infrastructure, specifically roads in the Leetah Valley.
Can I respond?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The money that is partially going to Division is for, it's out of a completely different bucket of grant funds that could not be used for Leetah. I do agree that there should have been a lot more communication with impacted businesses. But we also have to remember that a lot of the concerns that we've had about Division, a lot of that traffic is going to be getting diverted through the north-south corridor.
Okay, next question. What is your opinion about Measure One that calls for two-tenths of one percent sales tax for criminal justice, including a new jail?
Yeah. I'm against this proposal. You know, oftentimes, you know, we'll hear that the jail is overcrowded. And yes, that's true. But saying the jail is overcrowded is also oversimplifying the issue. We do have a staffing issue with several wings closed at the Geiger Correction Center. So those inmates are being transferred to the downtown jail. I've toured both Geiger and the downtown jail. And it's really clear that this is an area where policy can make a difference. We need to be investing in diversion programs, drug court. And the way that this would be paid for, it's a $1.7 billion blank check over 30 years. And the county commissioners still haven't really fully formed a plan. They're basically saying, give us the money and we're going to create a plan in a couple of months and convene stakeholders. That's not a good stewardship of our tax dollars. And we have a levy coming up potentially in February for our schools. And I want to see us invest in our kids. We do need to make upgrades, there aren't infrastructure upgrades that we need. Geiger obviously is in terrible, terrible shapes. But there's more that we can be doing to fund behavioral health, chemical dependency, and planning for the future.
Thank you.
I don't think that measure one is, I don't think we're at a time or a place that we are ready to fund another jail. We definitely need a bigger facility and we need our current facilities to be updated. And so eventually, I'd like to see some money be set aside for that. But right now, we don't have a comprehensive plan on how that money, that taxpayer money, monies is going to be used. So if we're going to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, we can't support Measure One. If it does pass, it will be on the ballot. Obviously, I'll support with, I will support the voters and whatever they choose. But I think that this would be better suited for maybe August when we have a better plan and we can discuss all the important services that these facilities should, should contain. Behavioral health, mental health, and drug addiction.
What are your views on affordable housing? And specifically, what strategies would you implement to ensure everyone has access to decent housing specifically? Do you want to start?
You know, I think we talked about housing as, when we think about affordable housing, we think about shelter or low-income housing. But we really need to, as a city, be thinking about housing across the board. Shelter housing all the way to retirement housing. And in order to do that, we, we need to be building in a responsible way. There is talk of the new Commercial Stabilization Rate Act, which will help us convert unused office spaces to condos and other apartments downtown. And I think that's a great step towards number one, infill. Number two, bringing people downtown. And number three, providing some much-needed housing.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm really in favor of incentivizing infill housing. We need to have more growth along our centers and corridors. Looking at mixed-use development and making sure also that we are being good stewards of the 1590 money that the state enabled us to create more affordable housing. I'm really excited about the opportunities with that. And you know, where my wife and I live in Perry, we are really starting to see a lot of the infill housing along our transit corridors, really working towards our transit-oriented development goals in the city. And I say this often, but one reason this election is just so, so important, there's a lot of reasons, but we are reviewing the comprehensive plan. And this is going to be our guiding document for how our city grows. And so it's really important that we make sure that we are using a lot of our existing infrastructure, trying to build up, not out, and building responsibly.
Thank you. What is your opinion about Proposition One that would prohibit encampments within a thousand feet of any public or private school, public park, playground, or licensed childcare facility?
I have a lot of concerns about this proposal. You know, it passed, it had a court challenge. It was pushed back in appeals court because of the language that with this valid initiative, it could supersede state law. For those that are unfamiliar, it banned camping within a thousand feet of schools, daycares, parks. And nobody, I think, thinks that we should have folks camping in front of schools, daycares, and parks. I certainly don't. But this ordinance is not going to do anything to help get people to housing. It is just going to continue to push, push, push. And I really have a lot of concerns with the enforcement aspect too. We do have a camping ordinance already and it is not, it's not enforced. Secondly, I mean, I think it could pass. The language again, it sounds, you know, I can see how it would, it would pass. It's also going to have another court challenge as we are voting on it because we did have a split decision. I'm also concerned that this is a manipulative tactic. The person behind this is Mark Lamb. He's been attorney for Tim Iman, Matt Shea. So again, I have a lot of concerns about this proposal.
I fully support Proposition One. As a mom and a teacher, I think we have to do everything we can to protect our children. And that starts with ensuring that there's no homeless camps within a thousand feet of schools, parks, and daycares. And even if you have some concerns about what that's going to look like, we at least have to try. And that's what we have to do on City Council is try to protect our children and not get caught up in the legalese. I know that Camp Hope was within a thousand feet of the Odyssey Center, which is the Libby Center over here. And they had to hire, or not hire, but police officers had to escort kids to and from school. And so if we have the opportunity to protect our children like that, we need to do it.
Question from the audience. I would like to explain your oath of office and describe what it means to you personally, your oath of office. When personally, Trelore, you want to take this one first?
It means setting ideologies aside and following the law and not being persuaded by any other person or personal agenda.
Yeah. You know, I'm running because I want to put people over politics. And at the end of the day, it's really about making people's lives better.
Spokane has obviously experienced racial homelessness. Can you give us a specific answer to how you would alleviate this situation? Specific answers?
Yeah, I mean, what is happening in the city is heartbreaking. But we need, I fully believe in a compassionate public health response. I think too often, we've left a lot of resources. You know, we have the potential to have a youth shelter with money left at the door. You know, our mayor says, we make it easy to be homeless. Being homeless is not easy. I am fully in support of the Regional Homeless Authority. I think that we have a lot of potential there. I really want to be the council member that is on that authority. There's still a little more work to do to make sure that we are moving closer to the Houston model. Really specifically, that would involve opening and funding a navigation center. Our current Trent Shelter, you'll often hear that that is a navigation center. It is not. A navigation center would have had showers and bathrooms and running water. This would have a lot of the wraparound services that we need and really providers connecting with each other and having a lot of that internal follow-up. The reality is that, you know, we have over 2,000 folks that are homeless in community, in this community, and we have 1,000 shelter beds. So we really need to build this navigation center and really follow, truly follow that Houston model.
Thank you.
I agree that we need to be moving towards this regional approach to homelessness. For those of you that aren't aware of what that means, it is using a model that came out of Houston that takes away the problem or the issue of homelessness. It takes it away from the city government and makes it a separate entity so that those that are experts in the area can really focus on finding expert answers. We're not Houston, so it's not going to look exactly like Houston. But we are going to learn from them and do the things that went well for Houston. We'll, we'll use that in Spokane and the mistakes they made, we can avoid them. But at the same time, the wonderful idea, the wonderful things that come from this idea is number one, we take all of the money that our services are vying for, comes under one umbrella. And so instead of having this money grab, the money is, it's, it's pushed out in a more responsible way. It also goes through and reduces any kind of redundancy in services. So if we have a whole bunch of one type of service and not enough of another, it's going to look at that and make sure that we have a balance to make sure that we're providing services all the way around. And it also isn't, you know, it's a great opportunity for, for homeless individuals because I think when we think about homeless, we group them all into one big pot. And we have to really think about homelessness as separate groups. There's the situational homeless, the mom who had to decide between, oh, I'm out of time. All right, thank you.
Next question, Mr. Dillon, comes from the audience. What are your thoughts on the city adding speed zone cameras in areas other than schools?
I'm supportive of this. I think that, again, our resources for police are stretched very thin. This is, I believe, already moving forward in the budget. I have some concerns with how this connects to the larger budget conversation with traffic calming. There's been talk about pulling a lot of the traffic calming funds to, you know, officers. It seems like there's some conflict there. This is dedicated funding with 27 traffic calming projects in the pipeline that would help reduce a lot of our, our safety issues. But again, I think that we've seen the benefits to our photo red program, unless you get a big ticket. You know, it has proven, proven to work.
You know, we are struggling with speed and traffic calming issues across our city. My concern about the cameras is that part of that money doesn't actually go back to the city of Spokane. It goes to a company in Arizona. So I'd like to see that money, like, looking at that in a more comprehensive way so that we're not, that we're not outsourcing that money. But I also think, I live up near Comstock Park and there was a big issue with high drive. And just reducing speeds doesn't necessarily mean that people are going to go slower. So I'm a big advocate for other traffic calming measures like roundabouts and speed bumps.
The relationship between City Council and city administration has been somewhat contentious at various points. I don't, we should be planning to interact with the administration in a way that fosters productive collaboration for the betterment of the city.
I would like to begin this first.
I can't wait. I am so excited to be on the City Council and work collaboratively with all groups that are involved. It is our duty as a City Council to bring a very polarized group back to the middle. And it means not having any kind of radical or personal agendas, but really being a voice for the people. Not just the voice of the people that we agree with, but the voice of our entire city. So I think it's, you know, they've done it in the past and we can do it again. But it's just about communication. It's about using research and data and community input and setting aside any kind of personal agenda.
I'm really excited Lisa Brown's running from here. And I'm excited to work with her. And I think that, you know, there's always some of the discord between, you know, council and mayor and within council itself. You know, a lot of nights, the votes up on the board are seven zero. And I think that communication, absolutely, you know, and there, there has to be more. But I, I do reject oftentimes the notion that there is this, you know, City Council's the shadow of government. And I, I would not describe their, their agendas as radical. You know, the office has become, I think, more responsive and responsible over the years. And, you know, the, the top floor of City Hall and seventh floor. I mean, it's, it's grown because our city's grown. And there's a lot more, I think, being asked, which is, which is a good thing. And I think it's really important to have that cohesion.
Can I follow up with that? So when I decided to run for City Council, I met both with our current mayor, Nadine Woodward, and Lisa Brown and made a promise to them to work collaboratively with them no matter what because it doesn't matter who we are, it matters who we want our city to be and how we want to represent our city. My opponent continues to lash out at our mayor on social media. And I'm, I'm just curious how you expect to work with her in a collaborative way, given the way you've built the relationships so far?
We're not supposed to really talk to each other like that, it's part of the rules. I'm sorry.
Well, then I'll have a question. I'm curious how he'll do it.
Do you want to respond since she hasn't asked your question? Please, can you agree?
Yeah, I'll work with anybody. I always have, you know, I worked in the state legislature for years. When I worked for Senator Bill Lake, we were the minority. You know, we were, the Republicans controlled the Senate and we still got bills passed every year. And I think too that, you know, there is checks and balances in government. There is accountability. That's how democracy is, is supposed to work.
Thank you. Communication with the public is always a challenge for elected officials. How do you plan to foster viable communications within your district if elected? Dillon, you go next.
Yeah. Yeah, I really want to make myself as accessible as possible to our residents. And that involves coming to neighborhood councils. That involves holding mobile offices, you know, just open office hours out in the public, not as much at City Hall, coming down to City Hall, sometimes coming downtown. You know, trying to make sure that this is also accommodating folks' different work schedules. Also in District Two, especially in East Central, we have a very diverse population. We need to be doing a lot more around language services, connecting to our BIPOC communities. And so I think really trying to make sure to meet folks where they're at. That is really the challenge on us and that's work that I'm really, really excited to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's about getting out of the City Council office and onto the streets, attending community events, being downtown, being in the neighborhoods, meeting with small business owners, meeting with neighborhood councils, and just being very accessible and having that relationship with the people that somebody can walk up to and have a conversation. And whether or not it's, you know, you agree with them, you have the ability to communicate with them and make them feel heard. And then make sure that whatever they are bringing to the table is addressed.
Next question from the audience. What is your experience with city budgeting? And how would you change current city spending or budgets?
I lost track. Sorry.
I think, I think it's Mr. Dillon.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Our City Council, or our city in general, is facing a huge budget deficit. And I'm very concerned if the government shutdown does happen, which it likely will happen, what that's going to look like at the city level. We are definitely going to be drawing on city funds at a time when we don't have those funds available. One of the most important things, one of the biggest revenue sources for Spokane is our downtown. And I think it is essential, as the only candidate that is endorsed by law enforcement and supports law enforcement, we need to have a space and clean downtown. And that means that anybody that wants to come downtown, not only feels comfortable coming downtown, but wants to enjoy all the wonderful restaurants and places to visit. It also means businesses want to stay in Spokane. I've talked, I've talked to a handful of businesses in Spokane and all of them have an exit plan. And that's not okay. If we see an exodus from downtown, it will be very hard for Spokane to come back from that. And so we need to be supporting our revenue source in order to maintain a healthy budget.
Yeah, I do have experience working with the city budget. When I was legislative aide for John Snyder, again, those were very tough recession years when there was a lot of important items that were, you know, on the cutting room floor. And we were able to pass budgets that helped working families. We are facing a massive deficit in the city. It's $20 million. If you add on the Trent Shelter, that's another 10 million. There was a budget meeting on Thursday. It's available, available through City Channel Five. I urge you to check it out. All departments are considering cuts to about five percent. There's a lot more that we can do though. Chiefly, that is hiring a fully functioning grants team right now. At the city of Spokane, we are operating without a grants team. That makes it really. At the city of Spokane, we are operating without a grants team, that makes it really hard to unlock a lot of federal and state funds that will be able to, you know, help us get out of this deficit, including money that would come to help downtown. But I really do think that, you know, when you hear that number, like, oh my God, what does that mean? You know, what does that mean for police? What does that mean for fire? And, you know, my garbage pickup? And so, it really comes down to transparency, really connecting the dots to what those services are.
The next question from the audience. What are your thoughts on forwarding the water supply?
Yeah, I'm not supportive at this time, you know, it's, when I go to the doors, voters are very clear that they would want to vote on it, and, yeah, it just, it just does not seem like it's as much of a priority right now.
It's been on the ballot three times, and the voters have voted no against it all three times, and as a city council representative, I promise to listen to the people of Spokane, and they've spoken, so I think we have to respect that.
One of the questions, what steps would you take to promote sustainability and environmental responsibility in our city? Kind of an open-ended question, but someone would ask that. promote sustainability and environmental responsibility in our city?
What an overwhelming question, right? I think all of us think about that, and it's just, where do we start? And I think the best part, place to start is with our children, and as an educator and as a mom, we're always talking about ways to make sure that we have a clean Spokane that's ready to move forward. And we can talk about the big-ticket items that are going to make big changes, but at a, at a local level, and thinking about how we want to educate our kids, we talk about the small things in our house, whether it's trying not to put our laundry in the dryer, or turning off lights. I mean, all those things are really important, and when we want to think about sustainability, we have to think about our kids, so involving them in that process is really important.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm really in favor of big, bold strategies and policies that help us mitigate climate change, and there's a lot that the city can do, and that the city has been doing. You know, I'm fully in support of the Sustainability Action Plan, and seeing that enacted and hit those emission goals. I'm really excited to see the funding come through from the federal government, $12 million to help out our treaty canopy and look at low-income neighborhoods that need more shade. This is a huge issue that does really help mitigate climate change, and a lot of that treaty vengeance is going to be coming to this neighborhood in East Central. And then also, land use, again, we really need to be careful about how we're growing, stretching our resources and sprawl, and then also making sure that we are supporting multimodal modes of transportation, bus, bike, and pedestrian.
Question from the audience, can we believe in this day and age that anyone could truly be nonpartisan in a nonpartisan office?
Yeah, I mean, the, this is a nonpartisanship, but I am a lifelong Democrat, you know, I, that's who I am, and that is not an abstract to me, it means something very specifically. And that means putting policies that put people first. You know, right now, at Planned Parenthood, I'm doing a lot of research on teen pregnancy prevention, you know, HIV prevention, sexually transmitted infections, using a really data-driven approach. But again, there is a time where we do see Democrats vote one way, Republicans vote another, and I think that, you know, at the end of the day, it's not about left or right or center, it really is just about making people's lives better.
I think being an independent or a nonpartisan is, it's not easy, but it really is a promise to the city of Spokane that I'm going to listen to everybody, not just those that I personally agree with. Everybody has been dying to put a letter next to my name, but if you want to put a letter next to my name, let's put down C for center, or E for everybody, or M for the middle, because that is where I'm at. I promise, you know, the only person that is going to benefit from having a letter next to their name is the candidate themselves. And at a time when we see our city council always voting 5-2, 5-2, 5-2, we're not getting things done, we're not moving our city forward, so instead, let's have someone that sometimes will vote with the five, and sometimes will vote with the two, but that research and that decision-making is based on community input.
One of our final questions is kind of looking to the future. How do you envision the future of our city in the next 10 years, and what steps can you do now to meet your goal or to meet your vision?
Well, in 10 years, in Spokane, I would love to have a clean and safe city, and that means addressing homelessness reactively, because our problem is going to require a reactive solution, but being proactive in how we look at our kids and interrupting those pathways to homelessness, drug use, generational poverty, so really focusing on that next generation. In 10 years, I'd like to see housing for everyone in Spokane, and that's shelter housing, low-income housing, that missing middle, and retirement housing. And in 10 years, I'd like to, you know, make sure that everybody here that came here because they know that Spokane is great, they still want to stay here because it's still a great place to be. You know, we look at, when I'm out there door-belling, I'm talking to voters, and everyone's talking about crime. They want property crime, assaults, domestic violence. Did you know that Spokane has the highest rate of domestic violence in the state of Washington? So, in 10 years, or not even 10 years, but in, that is something that we need to be addressing now, so that in 10 years, Spokane, we're not that statistic any longer. But I can't wait for 10, you know, in 10 years, I want my kids to be coming back here because it's a great place to be, and they're proud of Spokane as their hometown.
Thank you so much. 10 years from now. You know, I want to see us building sustainably, affordable, accessible housing options for all, to have a safe livable city, safe livable neighborhoods. There's some specific goals and metrics and how that connects with policies. I really want to introduce qualified bidder ordinance. We've seen this get kind of delayed through resolution. This is something that would really help our city contracts. I want to see us employ a program similar to Eugene called Kahoots, which would have our crisis respondable units working in conjunction with police for more of our behavioral health and substance abuse issues that we see. A fully functioning regional homeless authority that really does center equity, and I would like us to bring back our domestic violence unit. The domestic violence numbers are jarring, but I think it was the wrong decision for the mayor to disband the domestic violence unit. And I would just, again, love to see a really fully thriving downtown with affordable housing. I'm excited about some of the new proposals to build parking service lots, and I'm in time.
Last question before the closing, kind of a personal one for the library system. Liberty Lake City Council considered taking an active role in assigning what books should be in a public library. So far, the Spokane public libraries haven't faced this issue, but how would you support our library system should they fall into this situation?
Yeah, yeah, I've been following what's happening in Liberty Lake, and it's really heartbreaking. Our youth need to feel seen, be seen. This is an attack on LGBTQ+ rights. This is, there's a lot of coded language, and I think just outright racist attacks in trying to control a lot of what we are seeing with these library policies. This is obviously sweeping the nation. Spokane is not immune, you know, we had the Drag Story Hour protests here about three years ago, and a lot of those protesters in these movements, they work in intersections with, you know, anti-abortion protesters, Matt Shea, a lot of the extremists that we see in the community, and I'm really proud of our library system. I think that we have an amazing library system, such a beautiful new space, and I think we need to do to, again, make sure that we are protecting kids.
Oh, not at all. I'm a mom, a teacher, a book lover, and we have beautiful libraries in Spokane. I do not support banning books, but I also do not want to see our libraries, these safe, beautiful spaces, be swept up into political battlegrounds. And I think we just need to make sure that as a community, we support our libraries and allow everyone to enjoy what they have to offer.
Okay, we'll go to the closing statement, or opening, the closing statements, three minutes each. Who started with the opening statements first? Mr. Dillon, you want to do your closing statement, please?
Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. I'm so excited at how many people are here, and very appreciative of this opportunity to come out and spread my message. This is going to be a very important election. We are at a point in our, in time where we need to step up and pay attention to local politics and local government, because that is what affects us most in our daily lives. As someone that works with, you know, I am a doer. We can make sweeping social statements, you know, no kid should go hungry. Well, I started a nonprofit that feeds hungry kids. We should have equitable workplaces. Well, I started a business that helps workplaces and individuals create equity amongst our neurodiverse populations. We should put our kids first. Well, yes, I was an educator for almost a decade, and so, you know, we don't need protesters at city council, we need problem solvers, and I cannot wait to be your representative for District Two.
Yeah, thank you all again so much for being here and for having us. Again, this election is not really about left, right, or centered, it's about connecting authentically to people's lives and making people's lives better, because authenticity matters, collaboration matters, integrity matters, and experience matters. And I trust and respect Spokane voters, to tell you the truth. I often get asked, what is it like campaigning with a baby? First, my wife is amazing, and thinking about the future for our daughter has really been a big shift in my outlook. You know, again, we're a working family, who cares deeply about service. We love this city, we believe in Spokane, we're committed to a city that mitigates impacts from extreme weather like wildfires, sheltering our own house, a future where everyone from small business owners can thrive to a young couple wanting to start a family. We're committed to a safer and stronger future that we can build together for generations, and there's nothing that we can't do when we work together. I'm really excited to serve as your next council member. Again, to put people over politics, I want to be accessible to you, so visit my website at votepauldillon.com. I'm happy to meet with you anytime, and I hope to earn your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank the audience for coming and supporting the Senate by the lead, women voters, and the candidates, too.
Yeah, a huge thank you to Leonard.